We're gonna call this meeting go order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Tenon roll call.
All members present.
Our first honor report.
Okay. Uh huh, okay. Um, I think last month they said, well, the surplus in the budget, state budget was supposed to be like five billion dollars by the end of June 2023. Well, they're exceeding that. Now they're estimating it, the Department of Administration's estimated to be nearly 6.6 billion dollars, the excess, um, which is a good thing if they spend it, you know, spend it the way we, we think they should, put a little bit money in. I'd still like to see them put some money in education. I'd like to see them put some money in roads. But anyway, um, the report also said that, um, every agency could request a total combined spending of 3.6 million dollars in the new general purpose fund. And that general purpose fund, that's what's used to fund, to fund schools.
Okay.
And every department could, uh, request and, uh, what they need and still have a 4.4 billion dollar left over in the budget. So everybody could request, you know, and you never get what you, what you request, but they could.
Right.
And it'll come up that way, right?
Yeah, so they have the money.
And then, you know, the state always has their rainy day fund. And that is estimated to be more than, well, it's, the, the balance right now is like 1.73 billion dollars in the rainy day fund. So,
Because I haven't been in rainy days.
It's financially speaking, Wisconsin's in a very, very, uh, healthy, healthy state, you know, financially. Um, and then the rec, the, the Wisconsin Public Libraries are getting a record amount of money this coming year, 20, 22, 2023. Um, they're getting, it's an increase of 27 million dollars. Now, that sounds great, right? But they never give you money without strings attached, right? Right? Um, so, you know, you can use the money for purchase of library books, instructional materials, computers, related software in the school library. Um, but that software that's purchased, you have to consult with the district's DPI licensed library media specialist to get approval to spend that. So there's always a little bit of a, a little bit of a catch to those type of things, but, um, that, that's quite a nice, see, see that, an in, increase in that. And then lastly, um, Robert, Robin Boss, he was elected the, um, Assembly Speaker again. And we're gonna play a little cat and mouse game, I think, in Madison. Um, he is willing to give Governor Evers what he wants in, 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 um, in spending for education in exchange for an agreement to universal school choice. Now, the cat, but, but he hasn't yet defined what that universal,
So I was just gonna ask you.
Choice would be, but that's what he, you know, right now that's where it's standing. Now, just remember the, the state has the Racine Voucher Program, the Milwaukee Program, and the statewide voucher program. Um, and right now, um, it's based on, the state one is based on, um, income. Whether you qualify or not, there's some income restrictions. Um, and then it's also set up that no more than 10% of your, of your students, of your student body can go, um, but that's gonna hit, um, it's scheduled to hit that in 2025, 26, and then there's gonna be no longer a cap on, on that. So kind of wait to see how that one, how that all plays out in Madison, but they're gonna be.
And what he means by universal.
Don't know what he means. He doesn't, obviously, he doesn't know either. But that was, that's what he's telling the governor. I'll do this for you, but you have to do this for me, but I really don't know what I want yet. Basically is how it, yeah, how it's turning out. Yep.
Okay. Questions, comments on that? Okay. We'll keep moving. Board sees a report.
I'll keep this wee short because Colleen is here tonight, and I'm sure she's gonna give you more of a heads up than I can, but, uh, we, the science grant that I talked about, the one we had applied for, schools had, had applied for, that rolled out in November. Um, the youth apprentice program is off and running, and we can get quarterly reports on how our, where our kids are. You can get it, the information that you can get as little, boys, girls. Amazing. Um, so that was kind of interesting. And lastly, um, Stacy gave a presentation on literacy, literacy success and the science of reading, which I thought was phenomenal. Um, I, I was gonna, I gotta print it out, and I don't know if you're familiar with it at all through CISA?
Not, not through CISA per se, but I know the science of reading.
Okay, I thought it was just such a helpful tool. You know, not, it's not a curriculum. It's, it's just tools to help you understand how kids read, learn to read. I thought it was phenomenal.
Good. Thanks. Yeah. Any other questions for me? All right, we'll stay tuned for some future information on CISA. Student representative report, Max.
Hi, this is for all the people. This is, um, for, um, um, hygiene and food drive that's going on throughout the month of December. Um, it's for the, um, Klein County Public Health and Hygiene Drive.
Okay. Okay.
And, excellent. Oh, sorry. And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm working on this one for, but we're doing the hygiene and food drive. Um, last year we did it as well, and it was successful. We had like two of all crates worth of food, um, and hygiene products. There's a lot of stuff you can donate. There's like pasta, canned food, yogurt, and something like that. Um, so that, that's going on for December. Um, I think I've seen a lot of day of, and, 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 and it's all happening. Last week, the whole week of, um, last week, we had Thanksgiving break. Um, winter sports are currently going on, and the music go rehearsals are also going on currently.
Thank you, Max.
Yeah. Did you have a nice break?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any misconceptions or rumors. Um, did anyone sign up to speak?
So no.
Okay. As far as announcements, I just hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving break and came back a little bit rejuvenated, renewed, um, spent some time with family hopefully, um, or whoever they chose to spend time with, and reflected on the things that we have to be thankful for. With that, I will keep moving. Administration reports.
All right, well, welcome back, everyone. Hope everyone had a green holiday. It was a, definitely a day of kind of quietness around schools. Um, I was at the elementary school and up here, and I think a lot of staff and students were just trying to get back in the swing of things, so. But good to see everyone back and glad everyone had a safe and healthy holiday, so. Um, our first thing up is the dates for school board candidacy, so the notice of non-candidacy is due December 23rd. And the dates for candis, applying for candidacy is January 3rd. So we have two positions open, I believe, coming in April. And so I just want to make sure that those dates are out there, and you have the correct paperwork that you need, I believe, was left at your spots, so.
Yes, you know, we're in position to, to, you know, be two.
They are rural area spots, I believe, correct, yes.
Yours is not in that large?
Pardon?
Yours was not in the at-large position?
I am the at-large.
Okay.
So that could go.
You are at-large?
I am the at-large person.
Okay.
So I, I can go either way. Do you either? Yeah. See the city or the cone, yeah, or the, yeah.
You were the rural.
You're rural.
Dave is a rural.
You've got your part.
Anne's rural, you're rural, and I'm at-large.
You have one foot in both.
Yeah, one foot.
Um, a reminder that the WAFD School Board Convention, um, is coming up in January 18th through the 20th, um, down in Milwaukee. And so I do have paperwork for everyone to fill out tonight for registering. Our hope is to get that in, I believe, by the end of this week, so we can get the early bird registration. We do have, the hotel rooms are already booked, though, so. Um, the 23, 24 school calendar is up for an action item for later on tonight, but I just wanted to kind of touch on that. So included in your board packet was a draft of the calendar. Um, a few changes that just want to highlight is the start of the school year would be on September 6th, and we would be concluded or wrapped up. I'm looking at the wrong one, I think.
Yeah, fifth, the fifth.
This year's. It would start on the 5th, and we would end on May 31st, so. Our goal was to be out before June started. So we're not going into June, so we can have summer school, um, like a normal three weeks in June, but also give two workdays for our staff to clean up their classrooms as well. Um, we still have the semester break in there in January. That's on the January 15th. Still have a full week for Thanksgiving break and a full week for the, um, winter break in December, and a full week for spring break in March. Easter is early this coming year, or next school year, so that allows us to do spring break in March rather than April, so. Any questions about?
Yes, um, I had a couple of teachers ask me if we cannot have that break around Easter. It prevents them from going somewhere.
Yeah. Tell me more. Have the spring break, you mean?
Right, having the spring break
At a different time?
In conjunction with the Easter break, because then they don't, they don't go, you know, rather than maybe take their kids down Florida for a week, or.
I mean, because of the holiday, because they want to be home for the holiday?
Want to be home for the holiday, yeah.
So we could, we would definitely have to go into June then for the school year to get the number of hours in. So by law, we have to have 100 and, 1,137 hours, um, for middle school and high school each year.
Yeah.
Um, we are already looking at upping the start times for the high school to be able to get that. Technically, we need about 176 days. With the additional four minutes that we're putting on each school day, allows us to have 175 days next year.
Okay.
And so the middle school, high school start times are gonna be starting at 3:57 next year and going till 3 o'clock. So three additional minutes at the start of the school day and one at the end of the day.
Eight, 7:57?
7:57, 7:53, sorry, 7:53 till 3 o'clock.
So, I mean, has anybody else had that comment made to them? I mean, you guys are here, no? No, really?
No, yeah. We must be, we had a lot of pushback if it needs a week. And you know, but depending on the year.
Okay. What about the band chorus trip that we usually do?
So what is the question? What if we didn't have spring, or didn't have a week-long break? What would happen to that?
Well, would you, would you be able to adjust and have it, I mean, would it impact that trip, having it the same week as the holiday?
I think, I think the question is, what if we moved spring break off of Holy Week and set it someplace else in the spring? Is that what you're getting at?
That's what they were getting, yeah, they just, yeah, that's what comments were to me.
Yeah, as far as the band and choir trip go, as far as I know, it can be planned whenever that break, whenever that break is.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, it has been, we've had Easter during the trips before, and that just creates trips to wherever the kids want to go, which has been fine. It also has allowed the choir to perform at Easter Mass in New York City, which was kind of interesting. So I mean, there's, anyway you do it, there's opportunities and there's a cost, so.
And I met with Jen Massey about this prior to, and there's not a band trip next year.
Oh.
So it's in every other year.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Dave?
Are you betting pretty strongly that it could be no snow days? I wasn't familiar with you.
No, there probably will be, and I think what the district has done in the past is add minutes to the end of the day to make up the days.
Is that good teaching? You had three minutes to pass. What are you learning at three minutes?
Fulfill the requirements.
Add up, right?
We will pay millions of dollars a year to fulfill requirements. We pay millions of dollars to teach our kids.
Well, what is the purpose of a snow day now that we've learned to do school virtually? Do, do kids have to be physically in the building if getting here is challenging?
Very good point, Ed.
Or?
Right, so we can, some districts do virtual days in replace of snow days. Um, but then we have to make sure that every student has access to a device, to their materials that they need.
Internet.
That is a challenge, because not every kid remembers to bring their devices home or is, brings home the charger for the devices, so.
Is it possible to have an in-building optional day in which those students who have a harder time getting here could participate remotely or make it up or just have an excused absence that day if need be, and you'd still have a high enough percentage participating one way or the other, that it would count as an instructional day?
The parents would need to call them in for the excuse absence.
It's the buses, though, that you have to worry about.
Yeah.
Right, so, you know, what is that?
What is so horrible about adding a day or two at the end of the year? I mean, that's always the way it was.
We can always do that, too.
I mean, we roll it, I mean, that way it addresses your situation. Although I think the last couple of days of school aren't super instructional either, because the kids are pretty well ready to go, and it's usually a little bit more late on the academics.
I, I hear more complaints in the spring because the weather is so nice, and we don't have air conditioning. It's true, when I went to school, we just wanted to get out so we could get homework done, but.
That was brought up by a couple of staff members that they had just kind of asked some questions about the calendar, and they said they prefer not to go in August because it's so warm. You know, this year especially was extremely warm in the elementary school, that it was very hard for the kids to be learning. And so I think you got that same effect if you go into June, too, so, because it could be warm in June, so.
Very rarely is it warm here in June.
Not as much, yeah.
A long wait.
Right, you're right.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, let's sort of look at this in pieces. Do people have any trouble with the September 5th or 6th or whatever start?
5th.
5th. I mean.
So, okay, so it, you know, it says that you can't start before September 1st, so did we, we must have gotten special permission the last couple of years, because we always start in August, so we must have gotten.
We, I know we
I think?
Had submitted something to the state.
We must have had to submit something to get approval for that?
I think there was part of the tourist package, uh, package. Because Dorfoni wanted kids not to start before, absolutely late as I could.
Yeah, in terms of the after September 1st, yeah.
After September 1st, you can't find no help.
Right.
Well, this school year, we started on the 29th
Right.
Of August.
Then they go to school for a day or two, and then they have like four days off.
Well, they had a full week that week. That, the 29th was a Monday. They went all five days, and then it was Labor Day weekend.
Which is why I think we had talked about that last year and thought, well, it's a full week. It's not like one of those, like you say, hop in for a day and a day or two and, and then. But, um.
I personally don't care when you start it, but I know the business people did it, despite it starting before September 5th.
When I looked at the DPI website on start days, there's a waiver you can apply for to start before September 1st.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it says it very rarely will be granted unless you have some type of large construction project, um, facility project that prevents you from going into June, basically.
It seems like we've started before Labor Day the last, what, three or four years?
I think so.
I think there was some flexibility with COVID.
It was, with some instructional minutes.
I don't know last year, but I know, I think DPI was a little bit more flexible, so that schools could get their minutes and do virtual hybrid in person.
Okay, so we can't start before the 1st, but we could theoretically start on the 1st.
Yeah, and we looked at that as well. Um, the admin team and I discussed that about, do we go for a Friday, have a three-day week off, weekend off, and then come back? And they felt that it would be very hard on families. We probably wouldn't have a good turnout that first day.
Yeah, I think coming in for one day doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't know what the rest of you feel like, but that's just sort of disruptive. And if any, and if people were trying to plan another vacation weekend or something, you know, um.
The other option, too, we talked about is the admin team, um, was looking at Thanksgiving break and cutting that down to possibly three days, but I think we all felt that that was a much-needed break in the calendar, um, for staff and students.
Well, and we've practically have none of the kids in school because of hunting and everything else, so. Yeah, I don't think that's a good week to, to change.
Yeah, I don't think we need less breaks in the middle. I think the place that as a parent, I would most be willing to flex on, you know, over all my years of parenting, would be to go deeper into June. But, or into June at all. But, you know, everybody has different priorities and needs, and that's okay. I mean, my daughter and I, we were looking at the calendar that was, I was reading my school board packet, and she thought that going from January 15th until March 23rd was a long time, and that people might be hungry for a break. I mean, last year, we added on a couple of Fridays off during the school year, but we had flexibility because of COVID. But, you know, I don't know how you all feel about that either. Would that feel good to have maybe, President's Day is February 19th, that's what we looked up. It's, you know, kind of in the middle. And it's a Monday, so it'd give you a three-day weekend.
But we'll, they'll push you out then to, into June, so you'll.
Exactly.
It's a catch 22, I guess.
Yeah, exactly.
And so that would push us into what in June?
Chris, you got kids at school.
Well, that would be one day, so.
Well, in summer schools?
If you booked in a snow day, too, you could go a couple, maybe. But, you know, it depends, what, how is everybody's mental health? What is best for making this machine work smoothly and keeping our kids and staff happy and healthy?
I mean, do you think a February three-day weekend would be a helpful thing?
That is one thing I have gotten feedback on from both staff and students, is that, is the half-days that we put in last year were very much appreciated. Because the, the winter, after winter break to, to spring break is a, is a long, it's a long chunk. And there's a little daylight, weather's cruddy.
So.
It's a long break, but then, again, it, everything comes at a cost, right? So then if you go, you take that time, you're gonna pay it back in June, when the weather's beautiful, people want to be outside, so. I don't, I don't, but that is feedback I did get around the half-days.
And the half-days, so a couple of half-days versus one full day, you think would get more bang for the buck? I mean, like we did last year, the kids had no school, was it? And the, and the staff had half-day? Is that how it works?
I think we all.
Half-days.
Yeah, the kids had.
Oh, okay, everybody, okay.
And they were more community building than they were instructional days. I mean, there were, there were alternate activities that were planned in, in large groups. That's how they went down. And they were, yeah, it was, I, if, if you're asking my opinion, yeah, two half-days would be better than one full day. Because it's just, it's that mental health that we're getting that breaks up that, you have something to look forward to as a kid, as a staff member, like, oh, I just need to make it so.
Oh, sure.
I'm just telling you how, how the thinking goes, so.
And I don't think anyone would be opposed to taking spring break out of that Easter.
Well, you know, it just.
I mean, I didn't, I haven't gotten any feedback on that.
Okay.
Has never negative, but I don't, I can't imagine that anyone would be opposed to it. I think, again, like Dave said, the announcement is then, I guess we need to schedule that Friday off for Easter, which would then put us another day back, but I really don't think anyone would mind separating those two.
I just, you know, it's, it's like, please don't put it there again with Easter, because it prevented them from, because they want to be home for the holiday with their family, you know.
Well, and we have had it hit right around Easter, certainly more than once.
The last couple of years, absolutely.
Well, we like to schedule that week in case, because with the band and the chorus school, that's just about three-quarters of the school. But if they're not going anywhere this year, then we have the option to.
And like Dave said, they can schedule it whenever, whenever we decide when spring break is, they schedule it.
Yeah.
Right.
So, just so I'm clear, are we talking moving spring break then, or not having it at all? Taking the days and breaking it up, so we disperse them between January through, let's say, March?
I would think move it.
I think people plan on up, up length. That they can, I think families plan things to do together and.
So if we're gonna move it, and we're gonna add days in February, now we're looking at probably.
Okay, we'd have to add a Friday.
June 7th.
We'd have to add a Friday.
June 7th?
Well, add a Friday for Easter, add one day if we have two half-days. That's only one day. So are we talking more than two days?
You still have one day in March, because you have to have out for Good Friday.
That's what I'm saying. So that's one, that's a Friday, and then if we have two half-days, that's just one day.
Correct.
So that's a total of two days.
Yep.
So then that would be instead of June.
Instead of May 31st, it'd be June 4th. But they, you know, we just had a three-day weekend for Memorial Day. Right, and so they come back for four days. They could do two or three more the following week, and then go into a long, it's still before Father's Day, it still gets them out.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, June 4th doesn't sound like a terribly late into the summer date to me.
What do you guys think?
But no matter what we do, someone's not gonna be happy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's really, um.
So we always have two workdays for teachers, so that would be the 5th and 6th. That would allow one day of flexibility for a snow day then, if we have it. But summer school's gotta start on June 10th to get three weeks in, so. It's pushing it a little close to summer school, but it gives you one day, personal day. We have to add a day.
We have gotten feedback from teachers that teach summer school, but they like having those extra days.
Of a break.
Oh, sure.
So that they can get everything ready, close their classroom, and then get everything ready for it.
Yeah, that alone, frankly, right there seems like the most legitimate thing for having, being done, but. I mean, if we added a day to do two half-days, I, I think that there's something to be said for that, because February is a long month for everybody. I don't care what profession you're in. If it's gray, you're sick of winter, you're, you know.
If you add two half-days, I suppose parents can plan for it, but that's a scramble, too, because what do they do with their kids? You've got to have them picked up by noon or 1 o'clock or whatever it is, and not everybody has the luxury of, maybe you don't work that day, or they have, you know, somebody to pick up their kids, so.
Half-days are not the easiest on parents.
Yeah.
Is, is there a timeline under which we have to have this approved?
Um, preferably before the 1st of the year.
Oh, okay. So we'd have one more month.
We could bring a table.
Could we send out a district-wide survey about the school calendar and propose a few of the changes that we've talked about? And ask, would you prefer to have two Friday afternoons off or President's Day off on February 19th? Do you like spring break tied to Holy Week, or would you rather have it another time? And what are your thoughts about going into the first week of June?
This is your, this survey is to the staff?
The whole district. Parents, employees. Wouldn't take but a few minutes to make it up, right?
You're talking district staff. You're not talking vote.
Families, parents.
Well, we're talking about families' needs, right? I mean, you're the one saying, well, that puts a burden on some families. They can't take the afternoon off to get their kids from the school, so let's find out what people think. And then we can bring that information back. We can have the deadline be, you know, halfway between now and the next board meeting.
I, I don't think the last couple of years, if you had hardly any complaints at all, and you do a survey, uh, you're gonna kick a sleeping dog, and he's gonna come up and bite you, then, then we're gonna have 10 times the complaints that we got now.
You know, I think if parents see it on the calendar a year ahead of time, Chris, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree.
If they see it on the calendar a year ahead of time, they can prepare for that?
That's why I think we need to get this out before the 1st of.
You know, you do a survey, I think that's great, but you've got to compile those results. We've got to come back with another calendar and get it done before.
We've got to come back with another calendar and get it done before the first of the year, right? Is that what we're talking about?
It's our goal because families plan vacations.
That's right, absolutely.
Airline tickets, I mean, all that needs to be done in advance.
Yeah, I just think if they know about it, they should be able to. And it's, you know, as far as the Easter week, the Holy Week, you know, if nobody's really said anything to you. I mean, I've had one or two asked if we could maybe switch that, but if it's not a big issue for a majority, leave it where it is. I don't, I don't know.
Do we have a lot of kids that leave earlier than spring break for a week to go on vacation?
I feel like we have, I would say the same, I would say for both staff and students, they just kind of take vacations whenever it works for their family, so.
We used to.
Could be during spring break and it could be outside of that.
Okay, because if we moved it up, maybe you wouldn't have as many families gone for a whole week.
I think they're gonna do what they're gonna do.
Well, I mean, we certainly could move it up a week if we, you know, see how that goes over.
And then have the next week with a Friday off.
Yeah, we still need another day off.
Well, you almost have to have, you know, Friday off.
Oh, you'd have to, right. I think we're complicating things. I think sometimes people get that Friday off for work too and that's what allows them to take a vacation because they get that one day. You know what I mean? They don't have to take five days. They can take four.
Oh, you know, businesses don't, they don't.
Give you a Good Friday?
No. They don't even close anymore? They don't even close anymore.
I'm a pastor and I would not care if my kids were in school on Good Friday. Good riddance, I got work to do. No, I'm serious and have, for me personally, and I'm in unique circumstances that probably nobody else in the district is. But for me personally, having spring break during Holy Week, it's horrible. My last choice for spring break would be Holy Week because I have not gone anywhere on spring break the entire time we've lived in Algoma.
But you couldn't now if it was Holy Week.
Right.
We wouldn't let you.
Every week that we had, I had a neighbor who went thirty-eight years and wrote from college twice a day and never took a day off. And that's a fact.
Well.
We're getting.
So what do you want to do with it? I mean, do we want to leave it there? Do we want to change it? We have the opportunity to change it for twenty twenty-four, right?
I think we should build in two half days because I think they worked out well last year and I think it was really good for the mental health of staff.
Well, then let's, can we just table this till next month, next meeting and bring it back with a couple of half days?
Would it be, could we bring this back to the policy committee?
No. No, I think it has to be a, you know, it's gonna just delay it then.
Okay.
No, I don't think the policy committee wants to make that decision. I think it should be sort of just get a feel for the larger group. Maybe you guys, if you guys could get a sense of it and then just come back with what seems to make the most sense for our December meeting. I I think frankly, the decision rests more on those doing the work than the than the board.
Just so I'm clear, do we want to do a survey then?
No.
No survey, okay.
I think it's too late to do a survey. If we want to try and do a survey, if if we get flack for, you know.
I think you are overestimating the amount of work it would take to send out an electronic survey through the electronic resources the school district already has available to us.
Yeah, it's not like snail mail.
No, you could have all your results in two weeks and then make a decision based on the results and have a proposal ready for the school.
I mean, if you want to try that, that's, I'm not opposed to a survey.
I think what would be best is to have two separate calendars and give them a choice, A or B, basically.
Yeah.
Of the calendars.
Ooh, great idea.
Rather than going into detail about what day is off and.
You could get.
Well, I don't know. I think moving spring break is a whole different issue than half days or whole days, but that's me. Don't wait until.
Put together a survey and send it out to families as soon as we can.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I ask permission to go out of order from the agenda? Mariah is here from four H and she has another meeting at six thirty. She needs to be too. She would like to present a little bit, so I'm gonna let Katie survey introduce her.
So this is Mariah Manderthai. She is a twenty-four H program educator. Did I say that right?
Yep.
Mariah and I met back in, I think it was October, mid-October, early October.
October was a blur.
And her and I have kind of started talking about different opportunities for elementary children to get them interested in different programming options for H. So she's gonna share a little bit about what those opportunities are and what we think that. Thank you. So. I, as Katie said, I'm Mariah Manderthai. I've worked in Kwani County for the past six years and just moved to Algoma about two and a half years ago. So I've been in the area, grew up in Door County, so not too far away. And I taught seventh grade before transitioning to UW Madison Division of Extension, which is where four H Positive Youth Development is housed. Kwani County has this slice of positive youth development in Wisconsin of about five hundred members, volunteers and youth members, about twenty thousand volunteers in the state and a hundred fifty thousand in the membership in the state. There is, that front page is a study that was done with a portion of those youth. The goal is to provide all youth the opportunity to feel belonging. They develop positive relationships and through educational opportunities and educational activities, they can find what we call their spark. So their spark is something that, what have you ever lost time doing? You know, something you really enjoy and you think, oh, my gosh, a couple of hours is already gone by. That is a way that they can kind of tell like, oh, that's my, reading is my spark or sewing is my spark. So when we refer to that or you might see that in some of that information, spark is kind of that term we've coined. So there is a lot of research behind what we do. I know in the schools, we're looking for research-based, outcome-based programming. A couple of the the facts that have been revealed with four H. Youth involved in four H are six times more likely to be at their highest level of positive development. They are more likely to see themselves going to college compared to other youth and forty-one percent are less likely to engage in high-risk behaviors. They are twenty-five percent more likely to contribute to themselves, their families and their communities. So overall, thriving in four H, it it leads to academic or vocational success, increased civic engagement, employability and economic stability and an overall happiness and well-being is what our research has been showing. So I looked at our Kwani County four H numbers. The overwhelming majority of our members and volunteers do not come from Algoma in the county, which is why in addition to also living here and kind of planting my roots in Algoma, I thought that it was a great place to kind of pilot something where we can try to break down the barriers of equity and access. So four H typically, you may in your mind think like, oh, four H is the fair, which four H does exhibit at the fair, but they are two very different entities. Or maybe four H is just cattle and cookies, which, yes, there is livestock and that agricultural component to four H, but it is a lot more than that. We have STEM programs, we have robotics kits at our office, we have a cake decorating class coming up. We have an officer training where they learn parliamentary procedure and, you know, president, treasurer, good personal finance. We have international programs. We have two students right now from the Luxembourg area that are in Atlanta, Georgia, representing Wisconsin, the only two from Wisconsin as delegates in the National Four H Council. There's a lot of opportunities to learn and grow as a well-rounded human being. So my my thought is to break out of that traditional mold of a Monday night meeting at seven o'clock. That's a, that's a barrier to a lot of families. We have sports, we have extracurriculars. There are family, you know, family nights, dinners and transportation issues. If mom or dad works a second shift or their guardian can't get them there. There's just a lot of, a lot of access issues around kind of that traditional model. Now, it's still gonna, our traditional model still exists. We have twelve clubs in the county. One is based in Algoma. But we are expanding our our reach and that these clubs can exist in more than just that traditional nighttime off-site setting. Four H clubs can exist in on military bases. They can exist in this traditional setting and they can exist in school and after school. They can, kids can sign up. It's a very easy process and they can, like on a, we discussed lunch, lunch, recess time, if kids are interested in joining this kind of club environment, which is rooted actually in Kwani at the Dana Farm. That is where the the father of four H, Ransom Asomore, actually was born and grew up. So our our county is very rich in four H history and sometimes I think then we get stuck in that mindset of, I don't have horses, I don't have cows, why, I don't belong in four H? And that's just absolutely not the case. Sort of bring that programming to the school day. So kids that may find that opportunity, something they want, they have access to it rather than that barrier of our traditional nighttime, you know, Sunday night or Thursday night meeting. So we thought maybe we'd start with like first and second grade during their lunch and lunch recess. I I do have, I have a bachelor's in business and in education and a master's in education, curriculum instruction. I'm a licensed DPI teacher. So if I would come in during lunch and lunch recess, I have, I can provide everything you guys need on that end of it. It's not just some stranger coming in, but the kids get to really drive what they want to learn. If if they're interested in, we have embryology where they can watch, you know, the life cycle of an egg hatching or, like I said, cake decorating, robotics, a lot of STEM activities. These can be more short-term, so maybe I I come in once a week for six weeks or to to try and get as many kids afforded the opportunity as possible.
That sounds like an excellent opportunity for our district. Thank you so much for presenting that to us.
Yes, yes, the information, feel free to look through the the packet. Feel free to give my information to anyone who has contact information. But we are at the UW Extension Office, which is on the Kwani County Fairgrounds next to Land and Water Conservation and Emergency Weather Services. That is where my office is housed. We have the Kwani County Extension website and if you go to four H Positive Youth Development, all of my information is there as well. And I'd be happy to chat or answer any questions. Yes.
The kids that joined, and that's what we want. But if they've joined, would they have to go by the same rules as far as coming to the meetings or to learn about entering stuff at the fair?
Nope, so if they would wanna, there are two different vehicles for exhibiting the fair. The four H year is really mimics the school year. So our enrollment is in fall. They sign up, they get to explore their projects. They sign up for dairy, they sign up for cake decorating and they sign up for woodworking. They get to learn and go to these projects. So what he's meant, what he's talking about is there are some requirements of, you know, you can't just enter a woodworking project without going to meetings and learning about woodworking and how to put things together and how to stain things properly because you are talking to a judge about what did you learn through this process? If you could do it again, what would you do better? It's a, it really is a self-reflection at the fair. But with the flexibility now that has come down from the Division of Extension is that if they are meeting, to again, break down that barrier of equity and access of these nighttime meetings, say, you know, the kids, your first and second graders that I, you know, egged a group of them for six weeks that are like, yeah, I definitely want to learn about corn or embryology or something like that. We can, those meetings exist within the school day, so they've met their requirements. They they took that proper channel to learn from where they started, kind of like a pre-post assessment situation where this is where they started and they can enter at the fair. They, a lot of your, all of your students can also just enter at the fair in open class. So if you have artists or kids in in workshops that are like, wow, I really love this art project, but I never, I don't know, I never heard of four H, they can always, they can still enter in the fair in open class. But this would be a true club. They would be attending their meetings, their project meetings. And as long as, you know, we're working on that pro, that topic within those school day meetings, they can absolutely submit something to exhibit at the fair.
I'm I'm concerned about the auction itself.
About the what?
The four H auction.
The auction?
Yeah.
Okay.
That takes a lot of work to get an animal ready for that or a bird ready or a rabbit. There's chickens this year went for three thousand dollars and a pig went for over thirteen thousand. This year went for almost twenty and I guarantee you that didn't happen by looking at it two or three weeks out of the year. That that animal was worked with every day.
Yep, so there would be, obviously I can't provide that, which livestock is absolutely a component of four H. But if if someone would want to show and be qualified to sell in the auction, the auction committee is a is a chartered entity under the USDA that is separate from this.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, because I I was in four H and I was a leader, so I, you got to get this. You would, it'd be like a four H club, you would come in maybe once a month and you would head that that club up?
I think we had talked about maybe doing like a, after potentially the first of the year, a six-week project timeline of once a week during that.
One?
Eleven to noon, the lunch, lunch, recess time, where they could do like a, like a learn and lunch opportunity. They can bring their food to a space in the classroom. I can come directly to this building. And at that first meeting, again, we're trying to build belonging, a sense of belonging. We're trying to build strong relationships, communication skills, things outside of even just the content area. I would have to get to know the kids. They are technically in the clover bud project at that first and second grade level, which is why we thought that would be a good place to start because clover bud is more of an exploratory project where they aren't necessarily narrowing themselves into, yep, I want to show dairy and I have this cow now at home. And I, like, that that is something that would have to be joining a club and going to the projects. This might be a, we want to explore our our robotics kits for six weeks. So then, or at the fair, they've gone to six meetings as long as they're given in school every day. They've come to six meetings, which is actually more than the requirement for.
I mean, there's other things kids show at the fair other than their, their animals.
The exhibit hall is.
And that's what, that's what you're targeting.
Yep, art, foods, food preservation, woodworking, leather craft. Our shooting sports exhibit at the fair, we have photography, we have creative writing, we have Latino and cultural arts, intergenerational programming where they can interview grandma and grandpa or do a family lineage. I mean, they're, the opportunity of just outside of the barns is unlimited.
Yep.
You wouldn't have to bring a project to the fair, right?
No, no one that is enrolled in four H is required to exhibit at the fair.
So what's the next step?
I think, you know, we had talked about after the first of the year so that we can kind of get the craziness of holidays and all that good stuff out of the way. But I think the next step would just be communicating again about what dates work, what days work and maybe getting a feeler out to first and second grade teachers.
Mariah sent me a bunch of materials that we can kind of take a look at and share with families, teachers who can promote it in their classroom as an option for their students, just to kind of start getting the word out there about that and what is, you know. know, what the, what the goal of the program is. I kind of like to think of it as, I don't know, we kind of just talked about it as like a catalyst to other possibilities, to, so whether that be the traditional 4H opportunities that you're talking about in the future, or just some self-discovery types of projects, where they're doing some hands-on learning and exploring, to kind of see it as like a really big spectrum of possibilities.
And then, I'll just mention to you, like, in Brown County, it's, it started with some of these kind of enrichment-type projects going on in the schools, and now it has grown to, after-school programming now is all taken on for them by 4H and UW Extension Positive Youth Development. So, I think that it's a great place, it's a great district to kind of pilot and get our toes wet. I am new, I left my teaching position at the end of the school year, and I started this position in June, so I'm very new to this, but I think that getting in the schools and meeting the kids where they're at, rather than expecting, you know, with all the craziness of life, that, that nighttime meeting, or those kinds of things, it can definitely be an opportunity barrier that we want to kind of break down.
Do you know how many school districts in the state have their 4H within their school?
I can absolutely get that.
I know, I know there are some.
There are some currently, I think that it's only going to start to grow, because as of September 14th, 2020, 2022, 4H club membership enrollment, a simplified enrollment was rolled out to educators to make sure that those barriers were not barriers, in terms of equity and access to programming and educational opportunities. So, now, instead of the traditional, you need to go on, you need to have a computer and internet to go on 4H online, you need to be able to enroll that way, they have really made strides to, to make sure it's, it's accessible to everyone. So, I think that that number, it does exist now, because those four, military, after-school, in-school, and then like a completely separate kind of evening meeting, those are the four vehicles of meetings, so it's definitely been happening. I think that it's going to start to really take off now that some of those barriers are being removed.
Okay, sounds good to me. Any questions from anyone else?
With the county, does Erin move on for that, or?
No, Jill Jorgensen was here before me for 13 years.
Yeah, she was, was that the number?
Jill moved up to a state position, and is at the state office with UW Extension, still serving in a 4H capacity, but she moved on, in, within the organization, moved up and on. So, my position is not new, I just feel like being a newer employee in this county, and now a community member, I would like to make sure that we're doing the best we can, and getting as much educational programming and exploration out there as possible.
So, you replaced Jill?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. We look forward to seeing how this works out.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
All right, I'm going to jump back up to letter D under my section on state report cards. Including your packet was the district, the elementary, the middle school, and high schools, CPI school report cards. We fall in the meets expectations category for all three report cards. They have been posted on the district website as well for families to see. We're planning to do a school mailer, or school messenger email to families as well to relay this information to them, so, giving the information out there. We are looking at, we know school report cards are just one snapshot, one picture, but we also know that there's always work to be done on school improvement, and so, one of the things we're looking at doing in January is doing some professional development with staff on that day that we have off with no kids, I believe it's the January 15th, if I'm correct, so we're going to be doing a half a day focused on math and literacy, setting some framework around some work that we want to continuously do with staff around those areas, and so we're looking forward to that, but I just wanted to highlight those. Any questions about the report cards?
It, it's, it's interesting, because there is a correlation, and you look at, at these, we have a high number of, of students with disabilities that plays into this, we have a high number of economically disadvantaged that plays into this. So, you're right, when you say there's variables, there, there are so many variables to this. Yeah, and you see other, other schools' report cards, and, and they probably don't have the same makeup as what we have in our district, so, this, and these are, they're nice to have, but they can be very misleading.
Well, if you're comparing to other school districts, and not looking at the whole start.
Yep.
And AVA also, I just want to mention, does not have one, just because they were considered a new school last year, so, and they have a small subgroup of students too, so, that's why you do not see one in there for AVA.
And we're coming off a COVID on these too, right?
Correct, yep. High school program updates, so, three programs, just want to highlight, and just kind of give you an update of where we're at. They're all a work in progress, they're very much in the infancy stages, but the first is a program called Rising Phoenix through UW GB. Dave, myself, and Casey Holloway have been involved, they're in discussions with GB, along with the other districts in Kiwanee County, about trying to offer more opportunities for students specifically in their junior and senior year to get post-secondary credits. This is a possibility of kids leaving here with 60 post-secondary credits, which is pretty much equivalent to two years of college, or an associate degree. So, we're still looking, trying to do some investigating on cost though, because there is going to be a cost to this, both for the district, but also for families as well. It goes by per credit, so, that could be a barrier that we have to look at working out, but definitely got some potential there to see what we can do around this, so. The second one to highlight is our work around agriculture in education, and so this coming Saturday, December 3rd, we have our community-wide meeting for the whole county around how, how can we start looking at what agriculture offerings can we offer in our schools for our kids? And so, we're looking for public input from farmers, business owners, former FFA members, students, families, school board members, staff, to come together this Saturday from 7:30 at 2:30 at the Elsie High School, and just have a discussion around what skills are you looking for in far, as far as students that are leaving high school and you want to hire? So, I'm really, really excited about some of this work and potential that we is in the future with this, so.
This is with agriculture focus?
Correct, all agriculture, correct, yep. So, and that involves the other high schools around us as well, so, but each district will kind of specialize in one area, and then-
Is it just Algoma, Luxembourg, and?
Kiwanee.
Kiwanee.
And Denmark.
And Denmark, okay.
Yep, a Kiwanee county. The third one is very much in the beginning stages, but it's a fire one and fire two courses that would be offered to our juniors and seniors through NWTC, so they would be able to take NWTC courses. When they are done with their courses, they would be considered part of the fire department. They were working on some legal things with the departments that they're checking into on what age do kids need to be to be able to go into a burning building, drive the equipment, those types of things, but there's a lot of potential here, and it's a high, high need, in talking with our fire department chiefs. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago with all the chiefs and departments around us, and they were just thrilled to hear about this opportunity, so, we want to expand it, hopefully to include some EMS work as well, so.
I was going to say, that's a huge need too.
Yep, so, we've had conversations, I met with Chris and the EMS department, they're on board with it, and actually I believe the captain would be one of the instructor, instructors possibly for it, so, got a little bit of a connection there, so.
Well, that'd be so great, good work.
The last thing I have is Colleen Tim, is here from CISA 7. She'd like to take a couple minutes and share a little bit about CISA 7 and all the offerings that they have, so.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I am new on the job since July 1st, so I'll tell you a little bit about CISA. So, there are 12 in the state of Wisconsin. Here at CISA 7, we support 38 school districts, from Washington Island being our tiniest, to Green Bay being our largest, and then we go down between Lake Winnebago and Lake Michigan to Cedar Grove, Belgium, Random Lake. So, we serve about 90,000 students and just over 8,000 educators. So, the way a CISA works in the state of Wisconsin is we do not levy for any funds, so we are entrepreneurial organizations, we enter into contracts and grants with the state of Wisconsin, and then we also write for grants with private entities. Through our grants and contracts with the state, we're able to bring you no-cost services to support many of your requirements, so your teacher licensing, we have a teacher licensing expert, so there are a lot of different ways to enter the field of education today. Erin Malchesky on our staff is our licensing expert, so if you have somebody who's in industry, and they don't have a degree, and they want to be a teacher, there's a pathway for that. You have a degree, you want to work in a different area of education, there's a pathway for that. We coach your staff through all of that, and help you find the fastest, most economical way to enter into the area of education that you want, which is a really big part of our business right now, when educators are in short supply. Another piece that we support is your educator effectiveness, so helping you come in and develop how you evaluate your staff and support and coach them to the level of greatness that you want to see in order to support the best student outcomes. Again, those are things that are at no cost. We have a special education network, so your special education leader can attend monthly meetings, and, and we're really a help desk for your questions, and of course, special education has lots of nuances and lots of complexity, and is surrounded by lots of laws, so that's an area where you can have no-cost support for that. We managed this year the nursing grant, so we got money from the state of Wisconsin to support nursing in all of our districts, and, and that came through. So, again, those are a lot of the no-cost services that we provide to districts. In terms of going out and getting additional contracts, we went out and wrote for three different grants in the past to support computer science, so this year we're supporting our, our high schools with that, we'll add middle schools, and we'll add elementary schools. So, a nice segue would be the, what you just heard possibly happening with your first and second graders, and I heard the mention of robotics, so we have robotics tools. If in the future you decide, oh, if we want to keep something going for those first and second graders, either in that grade level as they advance, you could simply check those out at no cost through a CISA. So, there are a lot of connections through that work. We do, a big part for this is career and college-like readiness, so we have taken on the youth apprenticeship program that was run in this area by Luxembourg-Casco, so we're doing that now in northeast Wisconsin. A big, a big push for me is that kids graduate with a diploma by design and not by default. So, I like to see if a kid says they're going to go work at McDonald's, I want to know that they are, they have researched, that they have, you know, reduced-cost meals, free uniforms, insurance, and a pathway to management, and they're choosing to do it, and that's their choice and not something by default. So, I heard mention of the, the college credits. My own son went to a CISA 7 school, he's 20 years old, just negotiated his first contract today, he finished college in two years, graduated with 53 college credits, cost his, his dad and I, $1,300 for those credits when he was in high school, and saved him $50,000 off his college cost. So, that's where we want to come in and support your counselors, your administrators, in making sure that your kids are next-level ready from 4K on, and that they're progressing through those opportunities. So, we can take those college experiences that have gone to five years, six years, keep them at a reduced number of, of semesters, and a reduced cost. But a big piece of it for me too, is that none of your kids has to go to college. When I was superintendent in Michikat, we reduced our rate of kids graduating without diploma by design from 13% to percent to just 1% to 3% every year, and it doesn't matter to me if they're going into the world of work, they're going into the military two-year, four-year, I just want to know that they have a plan that goes to, again, what you heard from your 4H leader, that kids are really connecting that to their, their passions and interests. So, again, we write for grants and contracts to be able to come alongside of your staff, be an extension of your staff, and help you achieve the things that you want to achieve. So, we know your choices and who you choose to partner with professional development. I don't know that Algoma and, and CISA 7 have had the easiest relationship in the past. I hope that as a new leader, and with new leaders on our team, that that's something that we can mend, because we, we have a lot of support. You're a small school, it's called a small district, you have to do everything that large districts do, but it's more challenging, so if we can be an extension of your team, we would welcome the opportunity to come alongside your team and help you achieve the great things. Jesse's a great leader, I know we've worked with some of your members of the team in the past, and we'd like to be able to help you achieve what you want to achieve. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen.
Yeah, thank you.
I am complete.
All right. We will move on, elementary principals report.
All right, Mariah Ganatay was my first agenda item, so hopefully that presentation was inspirational for you. I'm really excited to start working with her, I think, not only does she, she, she seems like she has a really great mindset in terms of, you know, program outcomes, and then how to start small, and provide our students with opportunities and access that just makes sense for our demographics and for our community. And, like she said, being a community member, I think she will have a really great insight into how to accomplish that and make that successful for our students and beyond. November bright spots, I feel like the month flew by, I don't even know where the month went, it was busy with all different things. We have parent-teacher conferences mid-month, that is always a huge success, we always have the majority of our families that attend those with our teachers, the peer leaders, they ran their, I think this is the second and the third year in a row, food drive, so the students collected different food items to be donated. We held our first scholastic book fair of the year, which kind of goes along with the next highlight that I wanted to make sure to mention. Last year, when Katie Strutz, our library media specialist, took over for our library program, we held three book fairs, and the proceeds that the school brought in from that for our school library was like three times the amount that we had ever brought in, and Katie Strutz, she just has a really good handle on book inventory and ordering things that the students need, so what she decided to do with that, with the proceeds from that event is she just purchased a ton of books, all different grade levels, 4K through sixth grade, she laid out all the books in the tables in the libraries, and it was Veterans Day, the day of Veterans Day that Friday, she said, "Teachers, stop by the library, I have a quick little surprise for you." And she just let the teachers pick out whatever, however many books they wanted, so they left them handfuls of books for their personal classroom libraries, something that our teachers always express wanting to keep updated with current titles, because that's always hard. So, that was a really, really, it was a very, very generous gesture on her part. She plans to do the same with the proceeds from these book fairs that we're having this year, and I'm sure she'll extend that up here as well, once things kind of get rolling as well. So, thank you to her for doing that, that was definitely much appreciated. I did want to mention one thing that weren't, that wasn't in the notes, but it is upcoming, the Holiday Helpers Program, Jimmy Robinson is working on kicking that off again, so that is something that any of the families in the community can sign up for, if they are interested in any help for the holiday season, with any gifts, they can contact the school, and we can get them hooked up with signing up for that, so that they can benefit from that wonderful program. That'll be starting very, very shortly. And then the last item that I had on the agenda is just a huge thank you to everyone who supported and came out to see the annual Veterans Day program. It's always a, a very moving experience, if you've ever had the chance to attend. We did not serve a meal again this year, instead, Demakri designed some cookies that we- Instead, Demecry designed some cookies that we were able to pass out after, after the concert. But thank you to everyone, especially to Jen Massey and Megan Nebu, who did a lot of the planning for that, so.
Questions? All right, thank you. We'll keep moving. Middle school, high school, Pittsburgh report.
All right. One act just concluded their season. And this year's show was interesting in that we had, it was student-written. And so Cody Walker wrote the, the script. And what's exciting about that is through doing so and through having his writing performed on stage, we've got quite a few students, many of which were middle school students that participated this year, who are excited about writing their own plays. And so there's several groups of kids who are now writing scripts in hopes that they can have their shows performed on stage. So that's kind of an exciting development. And it's been great for Cody, who is a really interesting student, to have his stuff sort of brought to the forefront and celebrated. It was interesting, I, I watched the, the, um, the community performance and one of our, our longtime staff members who's retired came up to me and asked me about it. And he was so excited to see the group of kids that performed it and that it was student-written. He just, he thought it was, that was Mr. May. He was really excited about, about that development. So we are also excited about the impact that that's having on our, on our students. Creative design blanket donation, our creative design class led by Aaron Boulon. I think we had completed this now, but they had designed and tied blankets and then turned around and donated those blankets to the violence intervention program or projects. We just down the road, so that was a highlight. And then continuing on with some of the collaboration innovation that's going on in the school. Ms. Boulon and Mrs. Baumann are, have been working together and continue to work together. But one of the interesting things that, that came out of this is this reality check. So there's a great need for students to understand what their finances are actually going to look like when they graduate from high school. And so they learned about what possible expenses that typical people would have. They were able to make some choices. For example, are they going to rent or buy and how big and that sort of thing? And then they had learned about how to write checks. And then several of the staff were invited in to be, um, to run them through different stations. So they actually had to go through and balance their budget and see what that looks like on a monthly basis. And then they were able to, to look, reflect on that and see how they did or how they might do. They actually had to run their own finances. So that was a nice, a nice opportunity that the students had.
So did some have some hard lessons?
I think there were some eyes that were opened, yes. Yeah, so one of the feedback I got from the students was they just don't consider some of the expenses that are, are real, right? But maybe hidden like auto insurance, you know, they don't pay their auto insurance generally speaking. So wow, look at that. And then of course, maintenance and, oh, I have to pay for water. That was another one they didn't understand. So there was, it was interesting to see some of the eyes go, oh.
We used to do something on that order.
Yes.
A few years ago, um, and we got the community members involved. There was somebody from the banking industry there. There was somebody from all the, and then these kids researched what they wanted to do when they got, you know, what, what they're going to do when they grew up. And then what the medium wage was. And then they went through this and, you know, then they, then they had to go back and find out what.
Things they can do, the better.
Okay, Joe, your rent is $1,500 a month. Oh. So now, now, and then we, they'd have to come back, they'd have a checkbook, they have to come back to the bank and we'd have to check the checkbook, make sure it balanced. I remember one kid, he over drew his checking account. I said, "Well, that's a $25 fee, so I'm going to take that off too." Right?
Right.
You know, um, so yeah, we did, and got the community involved.
That sounds really cool.
It, it was. It was an eye-opener. Like you said, it was an eye-opener for a lot of kids.
It really, I think it really was. So speaking of community connections, so we also had, we had Jill Hendrickson come in from Weber Insurance. And she went, she gave part, I think, I don't know if it's separate or part of this preparation for this, but went over not only what insurance looks like, but then also talked to them about some financial literacy. And then in keeping with our career in academic, our career in academic readiness, talked to them about careers that are available in the finance industry, at least in ones that she works with. Yeah, okay. Then Veterans Day. The Algoma Community Band and the Algoma High School Bands joined together to provide a concert for the community. And of course, that's always great because you have intergenerational participation going on there. You'll have a high school student sitting next to someone who's been out of high school for more than 10 years, shall we say? And they're performing together, which is a really nice, uh, community builder. And then in addition to that, they, they did a food drive for the Kewanee County Food Pantry. English one recently did an interesting project where they researched leaders that sort of spoke to them. So they identified leaders that they thought had made an impact in the world. They had to research what that leadership style looked like, what leadership characteristics did those particular people personify? What was their lasting impact on society? Why they thought that leader was important? And then they, after they had done their research, they had to turn around and make that presentation to, um, another, it was to be another staff member and their classmates. And then they received feedback on not only their presentation, but their content about their leader. Library, back to the library. So Mrs. or Ms. Katie Stratz and Ms. Lewis are collaborating more closely now. And the, the library is becoming a gallery. So if you were to go up into the library, you'll see student artwork on display and that will be rotated through. So you'll see some sculpture. There's interesting giraffe sculpture up there right now and some other paintings and things like that. So you'll see that getting rotated through. I'm not sure if they have a timeline or if it's just sort of when projects get completed and they get changed out. But that has been exciting to see. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you.
Lot of good things. Questions? All right, we will keep going. You are a very young-looking Katie Horn.
I think most, in case, I don't know. I'm Abigail Robinson. I'll be kind of filling in for Katie while she's on maternity leave. But I am the lead teacher for Algoma Venture Academy, so I work there close to Katie. So I am going to be doing a report for her, which is.
All right, welcome.
So, um, for ABA, we had a audit back in October. We were audited by DPI for the sub-grant that we received last year. And so they were kind of monitoring our program implementation based on the grant, fiscal accountability, board founding, governance, policy, fiscal oversight, performance objectives, and then just compliance with state and federal law. And we finally heard back a couple of weeks ago and we have no corrective actions, which is great to hear. So a little bit less work for us to have to make those corrections. For excursions for ABA, we have had a couple of excursions in the past couple of weeks here. We went to Green Bay Metro and the students learned about the transit system. Only a handful of them had ever used public transportation and only like one or two had ever used public transportation in Green Bay. So it was a really interesting and kind of eye-opening experience for them to be able to learn about the ins and outs of it, but also to use it. Some of them had a revelation that they would for sure be saving to buy a car. They did not like taking the bus, but it was cool to see them use it as well. And then we also took the kids to UWGB. They met with the First Nations Department there and, because it tied with some of, tied in with some of their projects in social studies in quarter one. And then they also got a general tour of campus, which was really cool to hear some of the student reflection. Students who weren't really sure about what they wanted to do after graduation were like, "Oh, I really want to go to GB." And were super interested in like doing research in the different departments that they're kind of looking at after the tour. So that was really exciting to see as well. And then we also had a small group of students who were able to go to an all-access day at The Ridges in Sturgeon Bay. So they were with a group of students and adults with disabilities and did an adaptive hike, which was really awesome to see as well. So those are some of our excursions. For Pathfinder, Pathfinder had the opportunity to volunteer at Paul's Pantry on Halloween. The students helped package sugar into individual bags for the families. Students were also given a tour of the facility and had the opportunity to meet with some of the families that they were going to be helping. Pathfinder will be continuing their volunteering at Paul's Pantry in December, January, and February, which is great. And this is the second year that Pathfinder has partnered with Paul's Pantry. And 2019 was the first year. And then we also have a student in Venture Academy who will be speaking on the National Civic League panel. There's also some students from the middle high school as well. The student from ABA is Mackenzie Stewart and she will be talking about her community project where she works with East Shore Industries, Turning Point, and Sunshine Resources, communicates with their kind of community group leaders, brings in the groups to the school and then kind of does projects with them, incorporate them into other students' projects. Another community project that we have running right now that Mackenzie isn't a part of, but kind of connected East Shore and the other clientele with, is the hydroponic system that we have some student leaders who will be working with the adults that come in and they will be helping with our harvest in December, early December. So that should be exciting to see as well. And that's it.
Very nice, very nicely done. And we have to brag a little bit because how many credits did you graduate high school?
Fifty-nine.
From our school, so. Yeah, so we're very proud of the opportunities that we've been able to offer. And yes, and so she graduated in lightning speed and is, how far in your masters?
I finished it this summer.
Oh, that's right. You finished the summer and came back to lead our charter school, so, yeah. Very, very exciting when we get people to come back and contribute in the community, so. All right, I'll stop bragging on you. All right, special ed, Marie.
So the first thing that I have is the annual seclusion and restraint report. It's a requirement that we have to, um, give this to the school board and the state annually. So this is from 2021 to 2022. They also included just some definitions of the law and what seclusion and restraint is defined as. We wanted to highlight that our student is annually trained in nonviolent crisis intervention so that we understand that student seclusion and restraint is always a last resort if we want to be as least restricted as possible. And that these exercises are only used when a student or a staff member is in. Any questions? I know it's kind of a review report and it's kind of broken into seven different student scenarios.
Marie, I have a concern about student B that there were 13 documented occurrences of seclusions or restraints over the course of one school year and the parents or guardians refused to conduct an evaluation. What does that, how are we empowered to help this student?
Great question. It's kind of an ongoing, as this was from last year, an ongoing situation that is currently being pursued where the parent now is in agreeance of evaluation where we're kind of, you know, contracting from another school district for additional support for that. So Jessie can kind of go into more of that when you guys are in the conversation. But it's definitely been an ongoing conversation.
Well, thank you for your work in that.
Any other questions on this link for your document? All right, and then it's more special ed-related. We have a group of teachers at the elementary level that are planning a really cool experience for some of our students with variabilities where they're going to get a functional learning and sensory experience at the CP Center. I mean, in Algoma, we aren't necessarily readily available to some pools. So at the CP Center, they're very knowledgeable about different disabilities and like the temperature of the pool to just like what they can provide there is going to be a really exciting experience for this group of students. It was supposed to be on the 18th of November, but due to some illnesses and absences, it was rescheduled for the ninth. So I'm excited for that upcoming opportunity. And then more on the wellness side, we have an upcoming indoor winter market that will be put on by the Algoma Community Wellness Center. That's this Saturday on the third from nine to one. Not only will there be local vendors, but the Booster Club will be there, the facilities project and other student projects will be up for sale, the indoor winter market, so.
And that'll be in the gym?
Yep.
Questions or comments from Marie? All right, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Policy and practice committee meetings. I guess I chaired those. We had two lovely meetings, October 20th and November 7th. And we are flowing through the long lists trying to, to get the, the most, well, NEOLAs had given a sort of a priority list. And we are going through all the different sections and reading through. And you will see in the action items, long lists of approval of NEOLA policies. The ones that were in your packet, we just feel that anything that was changed even slightly, we should include in a packet. If it is something that we go, yep, no changes, this is it, we are just putting as a block approval. But even if there's just a word change or something, we go ahead and put it in the packet to give the rest of the board the opportunity to see it. And obviously, it also gives the board an opportunity to see some of the policies that we have. So, um, there were no significant changes, the, the kinds of things that we were revising. Probably the biggest, the biggest one was the one that we tabled and you looked into about our treasurer and the role of the treasurer because it had you doing everything.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I know I do a lot, but I don't do everything.
It was, you know, it implied that you were basically, you know, doing all the finances of the, a district. I mean, it was just the way it read.
Yeah.
Anyway, Jessie, Jessie clarified it.
Well, thank you for correcting that.
And we took out a line and.
Right.
Okay.
So that's probably the biggest change, which doesn't really affect anything but the treasurer position.
It sure would have affected her.
Yeah, we did, you know. But were there any questions on anything that was included in the package? Pretty basic. And again, we will restate that the reason we want NEOLA is because they work with DPI and they work with a whole set of attorneys that make sure that our policies are meeting all of our requirements. And so basically, when we are going through, we are just making sure that it fits our district. So it may be a matter of putting our email in or the right person that's designated for the responsibility in or, you know, but we have very little leeway to change anything because if we start going way off in a different direction, then we are risking violating something in terms of a law, so. All right, if there's no questions, then I will expect that you'll have another opportunity when we get to the, in action. We also had building grounds and transportation committee meeting on 11/15/22. Dave?
He's going to transfer that over to me.
Okay.
Um, we, Barb and myself met at Dave's house along with Jessie on November 15th. We called the meeting to order at 3:34. We discussed all the information received from Myron and McKinstry. That just seemed to open up more questions to be answered. So we really didn't come up with an answer on who we would want to go forward with, with the referendum. So, building part of it anyway. So we've got some more questions for them and we will be getting together again in the near future.
And basically, these are the two that we're looking at at this point for doing our whole facility study, which will give us a lot more information. And we're very early in this whole process of trying. And we're very early in this whole process of trying to get information through a facility study in terms of what is necessary, the needs, and then we will be broadening out with, you know, getting community input in the future and all of that in terms of maybe some wants and getting all together, all that information.
It just seems the more questions we get answered, the more questions we have.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll get, we'll get there.
Yeah, so this is a process, this will be a process that we're just beginning, we, we are looking um at it being a couple-year situation, so we're not, we're not rushing into anything. So, yeah, so we don't really have anything for you on that. Um current COVID statistics, I know it's out there.
So I talked with our school nurse this afternoon, uh met with her, and we currently have four students testing positive that are out, um zero staff members. I also want to highlight that we are seeing cases of RSV with our students and the flu is starting to just pick up, so.
Yeah, they're, they are saying, "Get your vaccinations, be smart, wash your hands." Um, 'cause this could be a, quite a year with that. Okay, other items for discussion. Do we have anything in particular on the agenda? Okay, we'll move right into action items. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting October twenty-fourth, the budget hearing minutes of October twenty-fourth, the Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of October twentieth, the Policy and Practice Committee meetings of November seventh, the Building and Grounds Transportation Committee meeting minutes of November fifteen.
So move.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Or Dave did.
Dave, okay. Pat and Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us.
So move.
Motion made by Mick, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. I need a motion to approve NEOLA policies, zero one four two point six, zero one four two point seven, zero one four three point one, zero one four four point one, zero one five one point one, zero one five one point two, zero one five two, zero one five five, zero one six two, zero one six three, zero one six four point one, zero one six four point two, zero one six five point two, zero one six seven point one, zero one six seven point two, zero one six seven point five, zero one seven one point two, zero one seven one point three, zero one seven four point one, zero one seven four point three, zero one seven five, zero one seven five point one, eleven hundred, eleven ten, twelve twenty, twelve thirty, twelve forty, twelve forty-one, twelve sixty, sixteen nineteen, sixteen nineteen point zero three, sixteen thirty point zero one.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jennifer. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next one are the ones that were in your packet. I need a motion to approve the revised NEOLA policies. I will read them all as soon as I have a motion and a second.
I so move.
I'll second.
So we, so they were in, they were in the policy.
Am I allowed to raise up on every half? Do you need a break?
No, that's all right, I'm okay. Zero one four three, zero one four three point two, zero one four four point three, zero one four four point four, zero one four four point five, zero one four five, zero one six one, zero one six five point one, zero one six six, zero one six seven point three, zero one six seven point six, zero one six seven point seven, zero one six eight point one, zero one seven one point one, zero one seven one point four, zero one seven two, zero one seven three, eleven thirty, twelve ten, twelve eleven, twelve thirteen, fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred point zero one, fourteen twenty-one, fourteen twenty-two, fourteen twenty-two point zero two, fourteen sixty, fourteen sixty-one, sixteen nineteen point zero two, sixteen twenty-three, and sixteen sixty-two. Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are tabling the school district calendar until next month.
Oh, but you're skipping five, five was different.
Oh.
It's just changing that, that date.
Yep, I skipped it, thank you. Approving the revision to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school district calendar, moving middle school, high school scheduling night to February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Motion made by Pat, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next one is one we are tabling until next month with the hopes of approving so that we can have it ready for January. Um I need a motion to approve the Algoma School District staff's health and wellness program to be added to the Algoma School District employee handbook.
I'll move.
Motion made by Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Seconded by Ann, discussion.
Does the employee wellness program include?
I think it should. As far as what, Dave?
Wellness.
Yes, it does. It does.
It does.
But this is the program, right, for the employee handbook that we are discussing.
This is what we had, you'd received last month in your packet.
All right, did um, we had a motion and a second, correct?
Yes, we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Um I don't see any reason to change anything in terms of our COVID medication practices. I think everybody's well aware of using good sense nowadays. Request for future agenda items. Anything? Nothing? All right, then I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five subsection one CE FNI for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing resignations.
I so move.
I'll second that. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Pat, we'll call though, Dave?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yep, yes.
Yes.
See you next week.